I want to welcome everyone to the December 3 regular meeting of the Abingdon Town Council. And I want to thank everyone for coming out and attending our meetings. It's a pleasure to see as many people here participating in our government. Also, on behalf of the Town Council, wish you all a very Merry Christmas. This is our last meeting before Christmas. I hope you all, we all hope you all have a very nice Christmas and a happy holiday season. Kim, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
And Mayor Crick.
Here. Mr. Bradley is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is a special presentation by Vice Mayor Patterson and Councilmember Bradley.
Good evening. I want to also welcome everybody here tonight and I wanted to present this beautiful image, this print. It's a framed print. It says "For God and Country" and I'll read some things about it here just in a few minutes. It's gorgeous. This is in our Veterans Park right now and we're going to be giving this to the town of Abingdon here just in a moment. So if you'll bear with me, I'll read some information. The Veterans Memorial Park is one of the most unique memorial parks in the country honoring our veterans and military servicemen and women. The park provides a special place to pay tribute to these special people and also tells the story of some of the histories surrounding their sacrifices for the freedom of our country. It is also a place for friends and families to come together, for children to play, a place to enjoy nature and learn about the importance of trees to our environment and the importance of a healthy environment to our freedom. Each of the ceremonies held at the park since its beginning in 2003 has had a particular theme. This past Veterans Day, special tribute was paid to the chaplains of our military who have ministered to the servicemen and women who protect our freedoms. During these ceremonies, educational signs have been unveiled and placed in the park to further the enjoyment of the park. This past Veterans Day, the most recent of these signs was dedicated, which tells some of the history of the chaplain corps. The Veterans Memorial Park Foundation has on many other occasions in the past has provided to the town a framed print of these signs to be displayed in the town hall as well as on the walls in the Washington County Government Building. The Veterans Memorial Park Foundation has asked that I present to the Town Council a framed print of the latest sign honoring our military chaplains with the request that it be prominently and proudly displayed and as a token of our appreciation for the town's honoring and recognizing our military veterans and servicemen and women who have protected and continue to protect our freedom. And it's a pleasure to dedicate this sign to the town of Abingdon.
Thank you. Let you all say this. You can say it. Thank you very much.
And this is the programs from the November 11 ceremony and I would like for this to be on record, please. Ms. Kingsley. You could put that in the records, please. Thank you all. Thank you to the Veterans Park as well. And I enjoy serving on the committee as well as Mr. Bradley.
Enjoy it too.
Thank you. And Mr. Heerich here and we always appreciate him attending and appreciate the work that you do. Okay, Council, next item on the agenda is approval of a minutes. We have six sets of minutes to approve. We can do them all together if there are no corrections or if you want to make corrections to them, we'll have to do them one at a time. Any corrections?
I move we approve of all.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bradley to approve the minutes of the October 5 regular meeting, October 25 work session, October 25 special call meeting, November 5 regular meeting, November 14 work session, and November 19 joint work session with the Recreation Advisory Commission. Sir, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Webb. In discussion. Hearing our discussion, Kim, please call a roll.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Crick.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. And those of you that have signed up, when you approach the podium, would you please state your name, state your address, identify any organization you represent. Each speaker will have three minutes for comment. Each speaker will be timed. Thank you. The first speaker on the list is Mr. Bob Sherrill.
Thanks for the opportunity to share this information with you. Like you said, my name is Bob Sherrill and I live in the Indian Springs, that's my location, in the Greensprings community. Been in there, living there since 1997. I cycled for approximately 40-plus years, 30 of which I've used doing some mountain biking. I'd like to go on record as being very supportive of the mountain bike trail system as being considered by the council. I would briefly like to share some information about the growth and popularity of mountain biking in our area. Within a distance of 30 minutes up to about three hours, there are approximately 20 to 30 mountain bike trail systems spread out over East Tennessee and Southwest Virginia. In our immediate area, we have about seven trail systems. Knoxville, Asheville, and all those areas have got a lot more. So I'd like to highlight a few of the systems that have recently been built. The newest one that we have in the area is the Tannery Knob Bike Park in Johnson City. And it's being built by professional trail builders. Hopefully, it'll be open this month or next month and is being financed somewhat by the Summers Hardware people, I think, or Summers Construction people, I don't know who it is about that. The following article concerning the park was in the Johnson City Press Chronicle back in May the 7th and I'll read just some excerpts. It says, "Mountain," this is, the excerpts are provided by the people involved. "Mountain biking is viewed by many state and local officials as a growing industry that could boost visitation rates and tourism revenue." "A market analysis conducted by research firm Tecnovio predicts the global mountain bike market will have a compound growth rate of 9.84 percent between 2017 and 2021." "The report also notes mountain biking tourism can often act as a catalyst for economic development." "Mountain bike tourism helps to bring in revenue for the host community and the region." "People travel various destinations or distances around the world to experience mountain biking," the report concludes. "Tennessee Tourist Development Commissioner Kevin Trivet is hopeful that mountain biking tourism in the state will generate the same interest it has in Oregon where cycling tourism provides an estimated $400 billion a year economic impact." A particular interest for this presentation and actually for me, I discovered about a month ago when I was doing some trout fishing over in Bryan City, Cherokee, learned that the Cherokee Indian Reservation had built a mountain bike trail system which opened in 2017. And to read what they said about that trail system, they say, well, it says, "The Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians hope the new Fire Mountain Trail System can promote economic growth in addition to their casino and provide a healthier lifestyle for their community." They go on to say that the trail system is, this is interesting, the trail system is the biggest buzz in Cherokee since the casino opened, so they're saying quite a bit. They go on to say, "Mountain biking is a no-brainer." Jeremy Hyatt, the Secretary of Operations, who points to the economic growth in Bentonville, Arkansas, as the inspiration for Fire Mountain, which was built last year by Trail Dynamics, a trail building company out of Brevard that is responsible for some of the best trail work that's done in the southeast. "I know that if we can build a phenomenal trail system, we can have a grassroots economy that can grow and bring investors to walk to experience land."
Mr. Sherrill, please, just a second. Would you please wrap it up, your time?
Yeah, I've got to, I'm at the end of that. But that's something you can use considering.
You can go ahead and finish. Anything else you want to talk about?
No, I was at the end of it.
Oh, okay.
About three minutes.
Sorry.
All right.
The next speaker is Chris Walton.
Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Walters. I'm the Managing Director for Kerry Street Partners located at 143 West Main. I'm a resident of Good Hope Road, but I do pay taxes on the building next door that serves frequently as your parking lot. I'm here tonight speaking in favor of the mountain bike park study. I'm a native of Woodville, Virginia, but after college moved to New York and worked on Wall Street for two years. I miss my family in southwestern Virginia and had the opportunity to return to the region with what was at the time Nation's Banks Investment Division. At that time, I had a choice to locate in Abingdon, Woodville, or Bristol. As an avid mountain biker, keep in mind this is 25 years and at least 20 pounds ago. One of the reasons that Abingdon appealed to me was the Creeper Trail, the Iron Mountain Trails, and other trails around Damascus. As a result, I chose to make Abingdon my home and have raised a family and built a business with seven employees managing over $400 million based here in Abingdon. I understand we're now exploring the opportunity to develop a park. I cannot be more excited. Mountain bike parks have sprung up across the United States. According to a recent survey, more than 1,400 cyclists across the country, 62% of mountain bikers travel to ride, make an average of two trips per year, and spend around $400 each trip. I printed for you copies of a recently completed study on the impact of cycling on one small town in Oregon that's very similar to ours. I personally have traveled in the last couple months with my young son to trails in Norton and in Kingsport, each time stopping with our group for lunch or dinner. Johnson City, as our previous speaker mentioned, is also developing the Tannery Knob's park and great information can be found on their website, ridtk.com. I realize dollars are tight, but I feel strongly this is a project that numerous constituencies in our town and county can rally behind and support. This initiative also supports one of our core brands as a recreation destination and will further extend lodging stays, restaurant revenues, and millennial appeal. In both my business and yours, investments in projects are about risk and reward. Guarantees are tough to promise. This project, however, is one of those rare opportunities that will result in a reward for our community many times over. Thank you for your time. If you'll allow me to, I'll pass this out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for your parking lot.
Thank you very much.
Ouch. Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Summers-Gill.
I thought I, oh, good evening. I thought I'd get a little tired of hearing my name called, but it's a...
You're always welcome.
Oh, thank you. It's a necessity. Well, as you know, I'm here to represent the Summers family regarding, oh, Linda Summers-Gill, 15448 Bryonwood Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm here to represent the Summers family. I know that I, I think I presented most of the viable points concerning what the family feels is the responsibility of the town to ensure that this site would be preserved and maintained as it was donated to the town in 2008. The individual, primary individual who was responsible for that was Derek Dutcher, my cousin's mother, who was the daughter of Louis Preston Summers. We're encouraged, I think, by the committee meeting that we had. Thank you very much for taking your time to do that with us. Something I had thought about, other than what I think you all understand, is the importance of the historic property and all of the historic properties. I thought about this notion of the town needing a balance. Without historic properties, there's no balance. You've got two or three historic sites right now and you have the barter. And I think for education purposes, as well as keeping a cultural perspective, that you need historic sites as a part of the culture and this history. There are a lot of families in this town that have a long history. The Summers family is one that I think is of exception. Starting with the member, the heir in the Revolutionary War, to the Civil War, Spanish-American War, four attorneys, generations that worked and lived here, two Commonwealth attorneys, and it's all bundled up in that little Summers Law Office that absolutely, I think, would be a travesty to be sold at a private auction, but you know how I feel about that. Abingdon history is a remarkable chapter. I hope and pray that you figure out a way to preserve it, particularly in respect to the smallest member of that group. So thank you very much and Merry Christmas and have a nice holiday to you too as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Link Elmore.
I brought along my co-captain here. I hope that's all right.
Oh, yeah.
That's fine.
Sure.
Link Elmore, 520 Court Street. And this is my son Benjamin. He's 12. We're here representing the Abingdon Composite Mountain Biking Team. And Benjamin and I have the honor of being the founding members of this group this year as we began traveling to mountain bike races around Virginia. And we found ourselves sort of unexpectedly forming the nucleus of the team and going around three and four hours away from here and participating in these races. And frankly, found ourselves a part of a phenomenon that we hadn't really realized existed. And we found this community of mountain bike folks who were traveling and racing and spending money. We ourselves became a part of this, spending nights in hotels, eating in restaurants. And I'm here to tell you, folks, if you build it, they will come. This is a group that is ready to come and spend some time in our town and we have something to offer them. I'll tell you, the closest race we went to was Bedford and that was two and a half hours away. So we could corner the market on this end of the state down here. And we would love for Abingdon to be known as competitive in the mountain bike middle and high school competition. And we would love to see our young folks have a competitive advantage by racing on their home turf. So we encourage you to support this initiative. Thank you for considering it. And thank you to Mr. Ring and the tourism folks for bringing it to your attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dennis Sutherland.
Dennis Sutherland, 14230 Indian Ride Road, Lake Spring. I'm also a local cycling enthusiast, lived here for 40 years. And I just, I think what the other speakers have said is certainly true. Be wonderful assets to the community, bring in tourists and dollars and all that, so. Link stole my line.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mike Paulus.
Hello. Thank you for having me this evening. Am I limited to three minutes? I wasn't invited.
I'm not, we don't enforce it strictly, but...
Mr. Crick, he's under K-2. We have a presentation.
Yeah, I didn't know whether I could sign the...
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, you want to sit back down?
We will talk to you later, Mr. Paulus. Thank you very much.
You get more than...
I'm sorry I didn't pick that up. Okay, the next speaker, Steven Jett.
Good evening. Steven Jett, 333 Court Street. I'm quite gratified that the council is seriously considering some of this historic preservation issues with respect to some of the properties the town owns. And I think this is vital for the well-being, long-term well-being of the town of Abingdon for several reasons. We need to give considerable thought, I think, to the future of our properties. And I'm given to understand that at least one council member is proposing that we do a comprehensive and deliberative study of the historic property situation here in Abingdon and not do anything precipitously and except things that need to be done for the safety of the properties and the public. And to really thoughtfully look at this as a whole issue. It's one that has its various challenges, admittedly, but I urge you all to take that approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Krebs.
Good evening. Brad Krebs, 466 Court Street. I also want to just express my support for the mountain bike park idea. I don't know a whole lot about it. I read about it in the paper and understood that you all were starting to take a look at that concept. So, you know, as a town resident, somebody who enjoys biking, and I have a son who likes a lot of the links I've been... You know, I just think it's a great idea from the perspective of the quality of life benefit for the town. I think it'll make the town more attractive to families and businesses that might want to locate here and look for those kinds of amenities, as well as being attracted to tourists. And it seems like a great complement to the Creeper Trail so that you have a multiple-day experience riding bikes. And I think that would really enhance the, I think there'd be a synergy between both of those projects from the perspective of attracting tourists and trying to have them spend dollars in our town. So I'm really interested to hear more about the project tonight. Also, I wanted to offer a little bit of perspective. In my professional capacity, I'm the Director of the Nature Conservancy and am involved in a lot of outdoor recreation development projects around southwest Virginia. And there's just an extraordinary interest right now around the region developing natural assets and outdoor assets for economic development. And for example, one of the projects I'm involved in is the creation of a new state park on the Clinch River that's going to involve four different counties and it's going to bring a lot of economic opportunity through recreation. And this project, I think, you know, is in that same vein. And just thinking ahead, there's just a lot of resources out there, I think, that the town could look at and leverage in terms of state and federal grant dollars for these types of projects. So I would really encourage you to consider doing this study. And as you move forward, if you choose to move forward, I certainly, you know, would be interested in helping, you know, folks think about ways that we could leverage different grant programs that could allow the town to make its dollars go further towards the development of a great park for the town. So really appreciate y'all taking a look at it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes our public comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I say-
Come on, come on up here. Introduce yourself and give us your address. I know you think everybody knows you, but they don't.
Well, that could be helpful to me. I better know that. But I came in from Winston-Salem, and I had appreciated being on the committee last week, I think it was, and we talked about, and I just wanted to add a couple, because I've been reflecting on that meeting, and I wanted to add a couple of aspects to that. And we're talking about the Summers Law Office. And coming out of there, knowing what I know about all the history of this town, and if you start, you know, at Fairview, where I worked, to say that, and you come down to Abingdon High School, and you come down to the jail, which actually would be a good tourist attraction now that it's closed. But if you come all around this town, and you go to the other end, and you go down to what you folks are calling retirement, and I owe you an apology, because when you said they needed money for retirement, I thought you meant the town was going broke and you needed money for retirement.
The mayor needs it.
But it's, so, that's where I got that, but I, I call it the mustard ground or over mountain. But getting back to this, I think it's very important that the town do a needs assessment and look at the properties here and the historic properties. There's no doubt about that. That needs to be done. It needs to be prioritized. And I would discourage council from, in essence, choosing one over the other and saying, well, we can sell this piece of property, but we're gonna go down here and use it on the other, until you go completely and look at what you have here in the town. So, I wanted to reinforce the need for a needs assessment and very careful study. I'll give you one quick example. There used to be a cabin over here on the grounds of the library. And my children, we've always walked this town, my grandchildren, my children have been here. And so, I asked where the cabin was, and someone, and it disappeared. And we would always stop there, and I would say, this is how people lived in olden times, and they cooked over a fire and all this. And I asked the other day where the cabin was, and they said, we don't know, somebody took it away, and we're not sure where it is. And that's an example of what I'm saying. And Abingdon, as you know, is a historic town. I think you can have a new town, as they do in San Diego, call this old town. People may object to that. But I think it's very important that people have things to do. And as I mentioned, you know, I'm into books, and you go to Asheville, which I hosted the Rome Scholars at East Tennessee State the other day in Asheville. And that's a hundred thousand dollar scholarship per student. They choose eight each year. It's the Rome Scholar. We had them in Asheville. We had them going and finding the Thomas Wolfe Library. We had them going to find other libraries. And incidentally, I don't know where the libraries are, other than the main library in this town. We have none. Burnsville, Asheville have a used bookstore, which that might be an opportunity to use that there. But I would just say, in thinking back to that, Mr. Mayor, there is definitely a reason and a vision, to have a vision of where you want the town to be in 10 or 20 years. I think it is just so important to, we, we retain the heritage of this town, as well as look at what's developing out there. And it was mentioned at the meeting, well, there needs to be money to go to the house out there. Absolutely agree, and there will have to be ways of doing that. But I would discourage the town in, from choosing one over the other, do a complete study, look at what you have, take it all in. And I would be happy, I drove back from North Carolina the night to get here, because I would be happy to put my time and energy into it. But don't tell my wife I said that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes our public comments unless there's someone else who wants to speak. All right. The next item on the agenda is resolutions. We have a resolution to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture for the purchase of a vehicle for Abingdon Police Department of people for the Code of Conduct. Tony Sullivan.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In the words of the great philosopher Ernest T. Bass, I never try to chew my cabbage twice, but unfortunately, I'm here to do that. Back in March of this year, you two may remember, as you received, council members, we received notification of a grant that we received from USDA for $25,000. That required a council resolution. It also required the authorization of Code of Conduct form. The resolution got completed. The Code of Conduct form did not. In speaking with USDA representative, in order for us to, to claim this $25,000, he just essentially needed the form authorized. And speaking with the clerk is probably more appropriate that all members of the council were present for a new resolution. So, that's what I'm asking. The resolution is, is simply stating that we support this grant program, and then there's a Code of Conduct form that has to be executed along with it. That would enable us to receive the $25,000. Purchase price for one car is, is $30,096.60 delivered. We had to, based upon our population, our income levels, we had to match $33,000. We budgeted two cars, so we'll cover that and match as budgeted. It just needs your support and resolution.
Did you argue with the Code of Conduct also?
Yes, sir. The only, the only stipulation, since, since we're operating under an interim basis, our grant representative asked that somebody of permanence sign it, meaning the mayor.
Well, I could be fired any time. But I've got a couple enemies on Towne Castle. I want to let you know that.
Well, you got them outnumbered, if there's just two enemies, so you're, you're good. So, so, he, he just, that was only stipulation. He said, normally, I wouldn't ask. I'd leave it up to you. But since we are in the interim, and Mr. Videm made you leave him within the next few months, that, that somebody of permanence, Vice Mayor, Mayor, sign it.
All right, officer. We'll get it signed.
We approve the resolution as requested by Mr. Sullivan.
Motion to approve the resolution of Code of Conduct-
And I'll second that.
-by Al Bradley, second by Vice Mayor Patterson. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, yes. I just want to make it clear to the public that in, in this resolution, it's approval of Code of Conduct for the police department. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan, or Chief Sullivan?
It's Code of Conduct. It's the governing body.
Governing body, okay.
It's, it's the governing body. It's not the police department.
Okay, the town council. Okay, all right. Because I just wanted to make that clear, who we're making the Code of Conduct approval for, sir. All right, great. Okay.
You want me to read this?
I think so. And there's the Code of Conduct, officer.
Good. I'm gonna read these two. First is the Code of Conduct. No employee, officer, or agent of the owner shall participate in the selection award or administration of a contract supported by rural housing service funds if a conflict of interest, real or apparent, would be involved. The abid of Code of Conduct was approved at the meeting on December the 3rd, 2018, and five members of the governing body were present, which represents a quorum. A vote was held on this resolution, and the resolution was adopted by vote. We haven't voted yet, but anyway, that's, that's the Code of Conduct. The resolution is, be it hereby resolved, that in order to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States of America, the United States Department of Agriculture and Rural Development, to provide funding for the purchase of, of police vehicles and equipment, the council does hereby adopt and abide by the covenants contained in the agreements, documents, and forms required by the government to be executed. Be it further resolved that Kenneth Videm, interim town manager, be authorized to execute on behalf of the town of Abingdon the above referenced agreements and to execute such other documents, including but not limited to debt instruments and security instruments as may be required in obtaining said financial assistance. This resolution, along with a copy of any required documents, is hereby entered into permanent minutes of this count, of this meeting of the council for the town of Abingdon. Tony wanted the, this to be executed by the mayor? Okay, we'll-
We will definitely do.
He could actually execute the resolution, because he's sitting in resolution.
It's the Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
Okay, okay. Without a motion and a second, are you wanting that done again?
I think it must seem the Code of Conduct, that's what the problem was.
Second by Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Any discussion? Please call roll, Ken.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Wedge?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
And Mayor Craig?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reports from the interim town manager, and the first item is a presentation regarding Phil's Penn 1860 Museum Committee, and Mr. Boswell is gonna talk to us.
Thank you, Mayor Craig, Honorable Counsel. The Fields Penn Committee was established at the Council's request at the August 6th Town Council meeting. The committee has met from August through September. During the September 25th meeting, the committee requested that Bundy Architecture and Engineering study the Davis Buckley Report from 2015 and formulate a report of its own concerning the stabilization, stabilization of the structure. The committee agreed not to meet again until the report was submitted to the town staff. I met with Mr. Bundy on site on August 9th, and town forces dug test pits to verify the underpinning work that was performed in 2006. I would now like to read the report that Mr. Bundy has submitted for your review and consideration. Pursuant to the Fields Penn Committee request, we have visited the historic residents, have reviewed the various reports and the various plans of repair we provided. Additionally, test pits were opened by town personnel to verify the condition of the existing wall and footings. Existing conditions: The structure is solid brick and wood-framed two-story residence with a one-story rear section. It is located at the intersection of Coming Street and Main Street in a low, poorly drained area with possible filled soil. The interior and exterior walls have severe cracks in the plaster and brick. The right front corner of the house has the largest settlement cracks with severe damage around the windows, et cetera, as covered in the Davis Buckley Report. The downspouts have been routed in a temporary manner with flexible polyethylene piping laying on the ground and routed to the rear. However, this repair is recent, and the downspouts and gutters have historically discharged at the corners of the house. Previous reports and repairs from 1999 to 2006. The geot, a geotechnical study was performed by Foundation Systems Engineering PC in December 1999 to determine cause of damage and repair recommendations for the residents. Their report concluded that the underlying soils are shrink-swell soils and recommend that the foundation be supported on atlas piers or underpin, underpinning the foundation by installing concrete footings under the foundation walls and installing an irrigation system to minimize drying of the soil mass. The concrete footings were installed around the two-story portion of the residence. However, additional movement and cracking has been observed since the repair. 2015, Davis Buckley Architecture prepared a report and recommendation of repairs dated April 6, 2015. Detailed measurements of the walls found that many of the walls are one to two inches out of plumb, while the front right corner is as much as four inches out of plumb. This report also identified the delamination of the brick layers in the exterior walls. Their recommended repair was to relay the exterior wall foundation to roof. Other repairs, including framing repairs, were also recommended in this report. The Davis Buckley investigations included test pits to verify the existing condition of the foundation wall and to determine that the underpinning of the footings was performed in 2006. The test pits did not find the concrete underpinnings, and a steel structural system was proposed to connect the micro piles to and support the foundation. Follow-up geotechnical investigations for this report found an underground cavity in the limestone at a depth of 47 feet with a cavity 46 foot tall. As a result, they recommended use of a shallow footing instead of a placement of micro piles to avoid drilling through the rock into the cavity. June 18, 2018, a proposal in engineering design was provided by Tar Hill Basement Systems to stabilize the foundation and level the floors. A washer system was proposed to stabilize the delaminating brick walls. A series of 34 push piers similar to atlas piers are proposed around the front right corner. No deep foundation supports were proposed for other portions of the residence. Current: Since town staff and committee members remember the construction of the underpinnings, test pits were dug at each corner of the two-story portion of the house to verify their presence. The concrete footings, underpinnings were found at all the test sites, and the end of the footing was found where it connects to the one-story portion. A small cavity was observed in the northeast corner of the residence under the footing. It is unclear what has caused this cavity, as it may have been constructed this way or some subterranean erosion or settling may have occurred. It was also observed that although the building was constructed in an area where bonds between layers of a brick wall were achieved with bond brick placed perpendicular to the main bricks, bond bricks were observed only at the first floor level. It is likely this has contributed to the delamination of the layers of brick. Recommendations: After review of the multiple reports and observation of the residents, Mr. Bundy makes the following recommendations for immediate stabilization, stabilization repairs. Number one: After review of the multiple geotechnical reports, Mr. Bundy recommends drilled micro piles into the upper layer of rock. Although the revised Geotech recommends shallow footings, this method has been attempted already with the underpinning, and additional problems have occurred. There is an upper layer of approximately 20 foot of limestone that can provide support above the cavity. Although not ideal, it is preferable to burying on the shrink-swell soils above. The placement of drilled micro piles to be connected to the existing concrete footings at a spacing not greater than five feet. Number two: Concrete underpinnings similar to the two-story portion should be installed around the one-story portion, and micro piles installed at a spacing no greater than five feet and connected to the underpinning. Number three: Installation of a steel rod and washer system to hold the masonry walls together until they can be reconstructed with proper bond courses. Number four: A geotechnical engineer should be consulted regarding the design, spacing, and drilling of the micro piles. Mr. Bundy goes on to conclude that these recommendations are to stabilize the structure as is with minimum cost and are not intended as a complete restoration. The committee has advised that they do recommend stabilization, and I know that, you know, we, you have proposed a use for the building. It seems that the consensus is that they would like to lease to a local firm such as Holston Mountain Arms.
So, that's the complete committee report? Is that, is it?
Yes, sir.
All right. And it's, it seems like that the first step would be to do the geotechnical study that he recommended. Is that the subject?
He's, he is suggesting do a geotechnical study consulting regarding the design and spacing of the micro piles. He, his recommendation-
Well, we would have to do that before we put it out to bed, right?
Yes, sir.
If we had the money to put it out to bed.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bundy also sent me a cost estimate for the work, for the engineering design, the design and installation of the micro piles for the two-story section, the installation of the wall washers, one-story concrete underpinning, micro piles in the one-story section, framing repairs to provide access and miscellaneous charges for a grand total of $318,000.
I've got a question for you, Mr. Boswell, and I hate for you to backtrack, but I certainly didn't want to interrupt you with that report. When you were speaking about the Davis Buckley firm, and they did test pits, and they were looking for the underpinning, and they didn't locate that, could you, is that, did I hear that correctly? They did not locate it?
Yes, ma'am. According to the Davis Buckley report, and myself and Mr. Bundy have talked about this quite a bit, the Davis Buckley report, actually, they, they dug the pits, but they failed to find the underpinning, which is kind of hard to believe, but that is what they reported. I don't really know what they were looking for.
So, they couldn't find it? Do we know what we paid them? I mean, I'm this, I'm putting you on the spot, and I'm sorry, but-
I have to talk in my head. I, I do not know.
And that was back in 2015. They could not locate that?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's kind of odd. I have lost words, believe it or not. And then our town of Abingdon found them. Is that, did, is that correct?
Yes, town forces dug all four corners of the two-story structure, and the, the test pits did verify that the underpinning work was dug.
Okay, well, that's unbelievable.
Jason, can you send us all copies of that?
What do you want?
I'm not, I'm not sure, having heard it, I'm not sure what I heard, so I'd like to read it, you know, and if you'll just, if you'll just send us copies of it.
Mr. Bundy report?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What you just, yeah.
Mr. Bradley, it's in the, it's in your pack.
Yeah, it should have been.
Oh, it is?
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, Counsel, any other questions?
So that's $318,000 for just the... To stabilize the structure.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a cost of hopefully... Well, we wouldn't. We wouldn't have a complete cost of the restoration, would we?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, this is just a stabilization.
Well, it's clear that we need to do something. In my opinion, we just can't let this building fall down.
Well, in 2015, then-director Matthew Johnson recommended two proposals. If you don't care, I'll read it.
Please.
Counsel from that time. Using Mr. Johnson's words, not mine. At this time, staff feels that there are two main courses of action: saving the house and restoring it in some fashion, or disposing of the property and the house. I do not agree with disposing of the property. I do agree with saving the house and restoring it in some fashion. And if that cannot be done, then I think our only option is to sell the property.
Okay. Counsel, do you want to do anything with this? You want to put it on the January work session for discussion after we get a chance to adjust Mr. Ford?
I think that would be a good idea, if that's okay with everybody else.
I'd like to say thank you to the committee also.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Our thanks, Mr. Urie and others.
Mr. Urie is here.
You all right with that?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Urie.
Put that on the January work session. Jason, you've got the next item, Mr. President.
Yes, if you don't care, I'll just go ahead and say it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Craig, Honorable Counsel, again. I reached out to Mr. Mike Pulis, who is the Architectural Historian with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources concerning the Fields Penn property. Mr. Pulis is very familiar with the property, has had even written a letter concerning the property in 2011, which was distributed to the then Director of Tourism, Greg Kelly and Garrett Jackson. Mr. Pulis was gracious enough to volunteer his time to travel to Abingdon. He's from Salem, to address the council concerning the property. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Pulis to offer his thoughts and expertise on the matter.
You're not on any timeline at this time.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't do well when I'm in a hurry. So regarding some of the things that you just heard, I have a rebuttal for some of that. But if you don't mind, I have a list of bullet points. Some of them are probably obvious, but I just want to drive home a few points. And this is all in regard to the Fields Penn House. In my opinion, it's one of the best-preserved pre-Civil War houses in southwest Virginia. It's probably the best house museum south or west of Withville. They have an excellent house museum there. One of the most architecturally sophisticated houses of its time in southwest Virginia. It's a very rare late example of a house with a five-bay facade. That probably doesn't mean a whole lot to most people, but it does to me. It's significant for its association with James Fields, an important, historically-important local brickmaker and builder. It's important house for architectural studies. It's a visually-prominent landmark. It is listed on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places by virtue of being a contributing building in the historic history. It is a valuable asset to tourism in Abingdon. Studies show that heritage tourism brings in more revenue than other types of tourism, except for maybe mountain biking. I'm not sure. I'm not sure they included that in the study, but I know they're both good. But the study about heritage tourism show that guests stay longer and spend more money. Now, to some other opinions here. A substantial amount of taxpayer revenue has previously been spent, which will all be for nothing if the building is lost. I believe it is imperative that the house be saved as a public amenity. Abingdon is the premier historic town in southwest Virginia and in the great valley west of Lexington, which I think is its closest rival. Abingdon has not capitalized on its historic assets and in some cases has failed to maintain or protect them. Some funding is available through the Certified Local Government Program, of which Abingdon is a participant. Abingdon has not available itself of any of those funds that have been available. I've been at this job for 18 years. Abingdon was a CLG even before that. I don't recall any time when Abingdon has applied for any of that grant money that's available every year. In addition, dollars from pipeline mitigation funds could become available within the next calendar year. I'm keeping my eye on that money, $8 million currently, and I want some of it to come to this region and not be spent in central Virginia and elsewhere. I'm not an engineer, but I have a Masters of Science in Architecture from Virginia Tech, and over 30 years in the field of cultural resource management. I'm a published author and widely-recognized... I hate to use the word "about" myself, but people think of me as an expert in historic brick construction. Jason mentioned the letter that I sent to the town in 2011 with observations and sound, practical advice to ward off many, if not the most persistent issues with the house. Few if any of those steps were taken to address my recommendations, and receipt of my letter was not acknowledged. I have provided a copy of that letter to Jason. He has it. Four years after my letter in 2015, the expensive engineers validated my findings by determining that the front yard slopes 2.5 feet from Main Street to the north facade of the house and directs water towards the northwest corner of the house. A French drain along the front wall directs water to the corners of the house. The downspout at the northwest corner was no longer connected to a below-grade piping system, but connected to a cracked corrugated pipe that leaks rainwater to the ground near the northwest corner. A PVC pipe once connected to the northwest downspout was filled with soil and abandoned. In addition, they found numerous insufficiently-supported and abandoned openings from mechanical systems installation, which can be fixed, hopefully sooner rather than later. This points to the fact that the house stood there for 140 years, and then, with no serious structural issues, when I first saw the house around 2001 or '02, it seemed fine. They had just completed the new porch, the reconstructed porch on it. Everything seemed okay. Then they installed air conditioning and other systems. They weakened the structure when they did that. If you cut on the underside of the beam, you weaken the whole beam. We don't have to be engineers to understand that. So I think that that casts a lot of doubt on all of these issues brought up by the Davis Buckley engineers about the substrate under the house. If it stood there for 140 years with no issues, how could it be such a faulty substrate? And around the same time that all these mechanical installations were made, that suddenly the structure starts to weaken, and cracks start opening up. This didn't happen over a long period of time. This happened rather suddenly. So I believe the necessary work can be done for a much more reasonable amount of funding than was estimated in 2015, or even than what was estimated by Bundy. And I think that estimate came in today. I think it should include building and site drainage tree work and tension rods referred to as a rod and washer system in the Bundy report. The tension rods would not address so-called delamination of the brickwork. I don't see delamination of the brickwork. I see spreading where the corners are pulling away, the two front corners of the house. You have to realize that the brick walls are 14 inches thick, and at the corner is where the weight is concentrated. And water dumping into the ground at the corners has a very predictable result, and that is the corner pulling away. If you go stand in front of the house, you see that the front hallway is doing just fine, but the two corners are spreading away from that, particularly the northwest corner, which is by far the worst. So I think you do some... You do tension rods to keep those corners from spreading any further. To take down and rebuild the exterior walls ground to roof as recommended by both engineering reports would do catastrophic damage to the building's historic integrity, authenticity, and appeal, and in my opinion is not necessary. Like I said, I don't think that there's any delamination. The engineers do not understand, and I don't mean to diminish them in any way. I'm sure they're excellent engineers, but their expertise is not with historic structures of this period. Those walls are fully bonded, I can assure you, from the top to the bottom. Stretcher bond is how the house bricks are laid. Stretcher bond is a mystery that I have unlocked. I have publications which explain how those walls are built. They're sufficiently strong, and in this case, they're in generally good condition. I was just over there today. I've been over there many times. So here's my recommendations, and just a couple more minutes, please. I recommend that counsel make a steadfast commitment to preserving the building and reopening the museum for the good of the town. I urge you to pass a formal resolution soon. I suggest that you set a target date for reopening the museum and begin solicitation of donations from individual and corporate sponsors, and remove the contents of the museum from storage. All that stuff is sitting in storage, and it's costing you money right now. Consider syndication of state and federal tax credits. Because the building is on the state and national register, it is eligible for tax credits. Since the town owns it, you would have to syndicate those tax credits. If you didn't syndicate, those tax credits are worth 45% of your expenditures, a full 45%, dollar for dollar. If you syndicate, you might end up with somewhere around 38%. I don't know, 37%. So if you spend $100,000, you get $37,000 back. Apply for those Certified Local Government Grants for incremental work. You could apply for $15,000, $20,000 at a time. And they're easy grants to get. They're easy to apply for. I know that you may not have a personnel right now to write those grant applications, and I can help you do that at no cost. So stay tuned for info on those pipeline mitigation funds that I mentioned. So new guttering and downspouts, certainly a possibility, I think. But the water has to be directed away from the site. Right now, you have a big corrugated pipe that leaves that northwest downspout and goes uphill. The water's not going to flow uphill. It's just going to flow right back to that corner. Every time it rains, that whole pipe's going to fill up with water, and it's going to stay filled with water. That's not a solution. So at my urging, Jason purchased crack monitors, inexpensive $5 monitors that you put over the crack, and you come back and you monitor that every so often to see is there movement? If there's movement, is it only away from the house, or does it move back and forth? That's important to know, and he's doing that. And I will continue that. Defer on all cosmetic work until structural movement abates or slows greatly. Cleaning and painting would be okay, and it needs it. So, and then continue to consult with me on all work as needed, especially on masonry repairs and repointing. My advice is free of charge and non-binding. Lastly, or not lastly, but next to last, town council can meet me and Jason for an enlightening tour of the house. I don't know how familiar you all are. Maybe you are. Maybe you're not. There's dead birds in the house. It's unsightly. The cracks are there for all of us to see. We can have an onsite discussion to enhance your familiarity with what's going on over there. So we can easily set up a time, and I will come down here and tour you all through the house, and I think that would really be worth your while. All right, and lastly, I highly recommend that you consider creating a new position of a town staff member to not only study your stock of historic buildings. You have six very nice historic buildings, very fine buildings, and only study them, but to have somebody that actually oversees the preservation of them. For years, I've been pointing out that the trees are overhanging the Fields Penn House and clogging the gutters. Today, Jason showed me where a gutter just got cleaned, and we stood on the roof and looked down, and that gutter is chock-full of leaves. You can't address the drainage issues if you don't do routine maintenance. And that house has received deferred maintenance for basically all the years that I can remember. So you need to make a commitment, a long-term commitment, to maintaining these buildings. And right now, there's only, as I understand, just one person who is responsible for doing all that, and that's an impossible task. I highly recommend that you create a new position. It has to be a well-paid position, and you have to cast a wide net to find the individual to fill that position. You're probably not going to find that person here in Abingdon. I could be wrong. But I would cast a wide net. You need somebody with real expertise, somebody that's highly attentive and with attention to detail. So that's it, and I'm here to serve you. My job is to work with private citizens and local governments, and I urge you to call on me, and I believe I can be... I believe I can help in this matter. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Do we have a copy of your report?
Well, it's all about the scribbled notes right now, but I'd be happy to send it to someone, Jason, and have them distribute it.
I would very much appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a side note. There was a master plan that was... Let me find it. Abingdon Historic Properties Master Plan that was prepared by Cooper Planning in April of 2013. I do have a copy of that. You know, we're going to pay firms to do these studies. We should probably take their advice and do some of the things that they recommend. And I can get you all a copy of this from 2013, what their recommendations were then. And a position was actually created for Historic Property Administrator. What happened, that position was created in July of 2014. I have no idea what happened in that position, but it was created, and that was per this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of 2017, 2018 financial audit for the town of Abingdon. Chuck and Brown Edmonds.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Billy Robinson. I'm with Brown Edwards &amp; Company. With us is Jordan Owens, who's a manager with Brown Edwards &amp; Company. And we're here to just go over some of the highlights of the June 30th, 2018 financial report and to answer any questions that you all may have, just to kind of highlight some of the key factors there. We want to, first of all, thank Chuck and his team and all the people who assist us in the audit. We can be quite persistent and quite obnoxious from time to time. And so we appreciate all the work that they do. We have a fine town staff that cares about these matters and takes our recommendations very seriously, and you should be proud of that. Not all local governments can say that. Jordan led day-to-day field work for this audit and is intimately familiar with the details, and is going to go over a few highlights. And then I'm going to wrap up with going over a pretty significant change that occurred this year with the implementation of GAAP-75.
Appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you all tonight. Just a little bit of context for tonight's discussion, we're in our third year providing audit services. The audit is, we are engaged to provide an opinion on the material correctness of these financial statements that is prepared by town finance department. So if you open up these financial reports, you go to page three. This is the opinion, and the opinion is actually one of the second best in addition. I'm not gonna read the details because it's pretty lengthy, and the explanation is ninety-three pages long, I'm not gonna bore you with all the details and the numbers, but the opinion states, in our opinion, the financial statement is critical of this period, in all material respects, the respective financial position of governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information for the town of Abingdon, Virginia, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and the respective changes in financial position, and where applicable, cash flows thereof, and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund for the year then ended in accordance with county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. One other item that's important inside of our audit report is the change in accounting principle, it's the next paragraph down below, and it is actually described in further detail in note eighteen, and Billy's gonna discuss that a little bit further at the end of my discussions. If you want, you can actually view note eighteen on page sixty. And that is where it talks about the restatement of net position, and exactly how Gatsby seventy-five impacted the financial statements for June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. One of the few numbers that I did wanna kind of go over is on exhibit one, which is on page eight, and that is just the total assets and deferred outflows of resources for the town of Abingdon. That number was forty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Essentially, this is an increase of two million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from fiscal year seventeen. Another number that I wanted to point out is just the statement of net position, and that was an increase of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, fifty-five dollars, to a total of twenty-eight million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Just to kind of go over some of the aspects of the audit, we began our audit in mid-June, where we go over internal control processes. This helps us with our risk assessments for formulating where we want to put our procedures for the audit. We also test compliance steps that are required for the Auditary of Public Accounts for the state of Virginia, which includes an examination of Virginia Retirement System submissions and data. That report was submitted timely, it was due by October the first. We didn't have any findings noted with that, that was a clean opinion, just like the financial statements. And we have also filed this financial report with the Auditary of Public Accounts by the November thirtieth deadline, along with the transmittal files for the state. One of the items that also wanted to go over is just in the compliance section for the financial statements. That starts on page nineteen. This goes over some of the specific compliance matters that we test with Code of Virginia, so budget appropriation laws, conflict of interest act, debt provisions, procurement, unclaimed property, urban highway testing. Some of the results of this testing is disclosed on the following page, on page ninety-one. This is a good, the schedule of findings and responses is kind of a good cliff notes for the audit. It states up at the top in bold font, number one, the Audit Report expresses an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the town of Abingdon, Virginia. No significant deficiencies relating to the audit of the financial statements have been reported in the Independent Audit Report on Internal Control and Financial Reporting, and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with Government Audit Standards. No instances of non-compliance materials of the financial statements of the town of Abingdon, Virginia were disclosed during the audit. So we didn't have any findings for the financial statement audit in part B. Part C, we do disclose a few findings, there are three findings that are noted here. These are not really atypical for local municipal government audit in the state of Virginia. The first one, two thousand eighteen oh oh one, is the conflicts of interest act, and we did note two incidences where we did not see a real estate disclosure form that was required to be filed by the town manager. We could not find that, so that is what this finding is. The budget appropriations is just talking about where the town exceeded its final budget in two different categories. And then the final finding is a Weldon Cooper report that was not submitted timely in fiscal year eighteen. None of these were material non-compliance, but they were things that we noted during our testing, and that we have to disclose to you all. And that's. And Jordan's right, there, that is pretty common to have findings in those areas. The state requires that if we find these things, we report them in this report. The state does review it, sometimes they will ask questions about it. The Weldon Cooper one was, I believe, an oversight by, and generally that is completed by your public works department, a survey that is submitted, and so I must, I would assume that that will not be repeated again. So, one thing I'm gonna kind of highlight and focus on is, we talked about Gatsby seventy-five, and if you go back with us to page sixty, that Jordan had referenced earlier, the restatement in net position. In the last couple of years, there has been a significant focus by the Governmental Accounting Standard Board on trying to book liabilities and get liabilities books that really are future promises. And a pension, a, you know, as you know, in private industry, there's not a whole lot of pensions that are left. Everybody has gone to contributory 401Ks, and so pensions are certainly a thing of the past, and the, and the private industry are becoming more of a thing in the past, but still very common in public. With those liabilities, though, create future obligations, and liabilities that, that really should be recognized through the service life of those employees, not later on after they retire. And a lot of local governments, a lot of governmental entities focus on fund balance, cash in, cash out. That's where you do your budgeting, that's where you're making your decisions year to year. But the financial report really is trying to capture some of those future obligations, those future promises that you have to meet. A few years ago, the implementation of the pension standards required that we record liabilities for those pensions, and those future promises that to give. The VRS calculates those numbers, they send them to the town, town implements those in their financial statements and record liabilities associated with them. This year, they did the same with what was referred to as other post-employment benefits. And really what that is, is really what it says is kind of everything else outside of retirement. The most common situation that you have, and what the town specifically has, is you have the ability for members of your staff, you know, your health insurance, this essentially relates to health insurance and life insurance benefits that provide, that's provided when they retire. You guys pay a stipend specifically for your employees. That requires a recording of a liability, that must be recorded. This year, when that matter was brought, that matter was, I think, brought to the town's attention by the consultants that you use to prepare for the audit, and then you undertook a actuarial study, and I believe as of effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, you've actually transferred or moved that plan over to the VRS plan. VRS is now administering that benefit. And all we're doing on page sixty is recording that liability, and getting that, those past promises to give, as, as determined by an actuarial firm for that. And that totals for you all, if my math, simple math is correct, about one point three million dollars. So those numbers are now booked, you'll have those actuarial studies every year, and just like the pension standards, they will, they will be reported. And as a result, we have about forty-five additional pages in the financial report. That, that's what those two standards get you. So, it's good bedtime reading, like I said, if you can't sleep at night, I would suggest you, you find out what happens when, you know, discount rates go up, discount rates go down, and those kinds of things. Sleeping pill's a much better use, but, you know, if that doesn't work, you can always go to the trustee caffer and go to the pension and the OPEB standard notes. Those, those will get you there if necessary. So we're happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the opportunity to serve the town. Really enjoy working with the staff that you all have, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
I've got one really dumb question.
There's no such thing as a dumb question.
We were presented with a recommendation from staff on changing our benefit package because of whatever that GA.
Gatsby seventy-eight, yep.
And it, it created a real dilemma for us, because it was taking benefits away that had already been accrued, like vacation that had already been accrued by the employee. And we, but I think all of us felt like that wasn't a very good thing to do. Just give us a sense of how, do you all have any sense at all of how important that is? I mean, we don't want to shirk any responsibilities that we have. On the other hand, we don't want to take away benefits that we promised people, so.
Sure. I mean, the reality is with the implementation of these standards, both OPEB and pension, it has become much more apparent what these liabilities cost future generations. And that's really what you're doing, just like when you issue debt to finance projects, you were, you were issuing debt for future generations. And so an obligation that you give to an employee is absolutely, I agree with you, it's important, and it's, it's commitment that you want to seriously consider what you do with that, with that commitment. And that's what this standard really is meant, these standards are meant to do, is to highlight what those liabilities actually are, because that is, it's a promise to, that future generations, future taxpayers are going to have to fund. And so with that, what a lot, and, and Virginia is probably pretty unique in the fact that the liabilities that Virginia governments have, particularly in the pension, is not that bad, because the pension has been pretty well-administered by the state. The investment performance has been good, they have made changes to the plans over the years. And, you know, ultimately, when I was doing, you know, when I started into this, there was one VRS plan, I think we're up to three or four now. And, and that's what happened ultimately, is when they started examining these liabilities and what they were going to cost into the future, they started making adjustments to those plans, because they were some pretty rich benefits that they were giving out to employees. And as, as a result, they've adjusted those benefits. My recommendation is, is to understand what the liability is, understand what you are agreeing to in the future, and make conscientious decisions on what you do with that into the future. You know, it, it's just like a lot of your, the reason that a lot of companies went away from the full-blown pensions is because it, it ultimately, it was hard to predict business success into the future, and so you're agreeing to these obligations to the future. And if the funds that you're putting in these, in these pension funds, in these OPEB funds are not well-managed, ultimately, you're going to end up paying for that out of your current resources. And that is going to be taking tax dollars away from other priorities, particularly the most relevant recent one is buildings that are having some problems, right? And so, it's just a matter of you have to understand what it is that you're promising, and you have to think about those people that, that you've made those promises to, but you also have to look at what those future generations and what it is that you're agreeing to, because they have consequences as well. And that's really what the standard is trying to do. So I'm not gonna recommend that you necessarily do anything, or do anything differently, but I think the standard is intended to educate you on what it is that you have, you are obligating the future generations to.
Thank you, sir. And I think the key word is what we promised our employees, promises when we hired them. That's, you know, that's, that's a big, that's a big word.
A lot of governments, quite frankly, have changed their policies and stopped the promising, so to speak.
I think we've done.
They grandfathered some folks in. I had some localities that grandfathered folks who had been with the locality, you know, for fifteen years, and then if you had been, you know, you want to give people time to plan, right?
Right.
And just like for retirement, you can't plan for retirement overnight. And so, it's not fair to take a benefit away that someone is dependent upon that in the, in the near future. Now, is it fair for someone, for someone that has twenty years to plan for that? That's a decision that you have to make. But that, that is my recommendation. You know, proceed, proceed with caution, proceed with knowledge, but recognize that, you know, people, people are planning on this in the retirement, so you just have to, you gotta, you have to do the hard job. We can come tell you about it, you guys have to make the hard decisions, right?
Oh, we can do it, ma'am.
Yeah, we can.
That's right.
That is a problem, you know, with, with, they've already planned their retirement, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to take that away.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Ma'am, thank you all, appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is reconsideration of funding for the proposed Great Knobs Mountain Bike Park, Mr. Dury.
Thank you, and thanks for everybody who spoke tonight and who called and emailed. The day after our work session, Dr. Harold Courier ran an article, and I hope that you received some of the feedback from that article. It was overwhelmingly positive, and people offered expertise and resources to see this through. I'm not sure how you want to proceed, if you want to hear the highlights of the presentation that we, I presented to you at the work session, or if you want to have questions, how would you like to proceed?
Do you all want to hear any more about the presentation?
I think that the public should hear highlights, and that way we have it on record in our formal meeting.
The vice mayor spoke, so we're gonna do it.
I shall speak then. For years, Abingdon has had the Virginia Creeper Trail and Barter Theater, and we've had our historic properties, and I agree, we've got lots of opportunity to highlight our historical properties better as a tourism asset. And we often get phone calls from the media that say, what's new? BTC, Virginia Tourism Corporation puts out a book annually about what's new, and they take that book on their media calls throughout this country and to Europe. And if you, they call us up, and we don't have anything that's what's new, we're not on the list of topics of conversation, and we miss out on some of that valuable media. So, how many times have we asked, what's the next big thing for Abingdon? Or we need another idea like the Virginia Creeper Trail? And as we search for that answer, we have to think about what will fit our brand, and our values of being green, and honoring our natural assets, and what will complement our resources, and what's achievable, what will build our economy, whether in terms of attracting new businesses, or provide a recruitment or retention tool for existing businesses. And a collection of departments, tourism, parks and rec, economic development, IT, and partners with Friends of Southwest Virginia and Virginia Creeper Trail are here to present a solution, and the Great Knobs Mountain Bike Park is one of those solutions. You already own the land, a hundred and thirty acres, behind the wastewater treatment center, behind the police shooting range there. The topography is such that there's wastewater treatment center, the police shooting range, and then pretty much a cliff. And the acreage that we're talking about is on the other side of that cliff, and it's about a hundred and thirty acres, with three hundred feet of elevation change. And it's laying idle, you already own it, it's laying idle, and you'd be hard-pressed to find another use for this land. So, Mountain Bike Park is a great solution. Mountain Bike Parks provides safe surroundings for healthy lifestyles, promotes health and fitness for families seeking a healthy lifestyle to choose close to home. It attracts tourists, as you have heard, and it accommodates bikes and skills and ages of all kinds, and helps develop a sense of community. And who wants a bike park? I think you've heard enough from others, so I will not go into that. I will remind you that four hundred and thirty-five thousand mountain bike riders visit annually to Natahala and Piska National Forest, and sixty percent of those riders are local, while forty percent come from out of town. And it is a valuable demographic, as again, I think Mr. Elmore pointed out, with families spending the night and eating out as they travel to these parks. Why should you build? It's an economic engine, it attracts new businesses, it helps keep people in the community, retention of employees, it fits our brand, complements what we're already doing, and it connects both ends of Abingdon. Virginia Creeper Trail via the urban pathway, shopping in between, and then the mountain bike trail that would be through muster grounds. So you're also connecting some of your historic properties. As a result of this conversation, we As a result of this conversation, William King has expressed interest in having a spur trail. And I think that would help William King tremendously. They'd have to be a switchback trail going up that steep hill, but I think it would increase their visitation as well. And as they go to these side spurs trails, it's going to increase business all along the way. It attracts a new demographic to Abingdon, it complements Virginia Creeper Trail, and establishes the urban pathway as just that, a pathway to connect both ends. It's a way to add to our total number of visitors. In other words, we're not giving same visitor as just another thing, although this will provide for a multiple-day experience, bike experience, but it's going to bring a new population. And we already own the land, as I said, and this fits the use of that land perfectly. Let's make it work for us. There's big steps in this process, and the first step is the planning, and it's called the envision stage. And International Mountain Bike Association would be a vital partner in this process. It will help us understand what a comprehensive, connected bike network would look like in Abingdon, and it would tell us what the Great Knobs Mountain Bike Park would look like, how it would be integrated and connected to the Virginia Creeper Trail, Abingdon, and other points of interest, what the trail will look like, best use of land, how to maximize the trails. And they would come and visit, meet stakeholders. You're certainly a stakeholder, William King would be a stakeholder if they wanted the spur trail, Hartwood, some of the businesses, tourism, parks and rec, meet with all stakeholders. And the deliverables would be a site survey, concept document, illustration, description of trail experience, outline of trail specs, the trail width, slope, surface tread, and the mileage, produce a map graphic, comprehensive trail plan for Abingdon, include, and we'd love to include little bike playgrounds along the way, little skills playgrounds along the way. Do I work with an expert, International Mountain Bike Association? Because they invented this wheel. They will help us arrive at a plan that is ideal, and getting MVA's deep well of knowledge and experience is important. We don't have to spend time wondering if they already have the answers. Provide a comprehensive view that prevents pitfalls or having to go back and redo. We'd be saving costs because if we do it right the first time, plus having an MVA-certified trail helps tremendously with marketing and attracting visitors who want a certain type of trail. They will help minimize risk from the very first step. They will optimize growth and impact by doing it the right way, and an MVA-designed trail gets more traffic. So, this would be the first step. After the envision step, which would be completed in 2019, then, we would have the design, which is informed by the envision, and then, the document, which is the construction document, and then, we would have implementation, which is the construction of the trail, and then, we would have evolution, so how do we change the trail, add to the trail, enhance the trail, those kind of things. This is a timely opportunity for this council to create a transformational legacy that is no less significant than the Virginia Creeper Trail. And it's a good idea, it's the right idea at this time. And we are asking for Town Council to authorize us to move forward with the envision phase to negotiate the contract with International Mountain Bike Association that will not exceed twenty thousand dollars. And as I announced at the work session, when a citizen heard about this vision, they felt so strongly that this would bring a new demographic to Abingdon and help the economy, that they have agreed to underwrite ten thousand dollars of that anticipated twenty thousand dollar cost. And I would say throughout the process and the phases, you've heard Brad mentioned other grant sources, and we would see this as a public-private partnership through to the end.
Any questions, Ms. Durrin?
So, the initial phase is essentially a feasibility study?
Essentially a feasibility study.
Jane, I didn't hear you mention a cost estimate. I wonder will we get some type of cost estimate? Is that going to be the first phase or?
Yeah, of the whole project?
Yeah. I'll rough.
I don't have that, and I've asked that question, and maybe Emily, you could, if I'm not going to put you on the spot. But what this first study does is look at Abingdon as a whole and the mountain bike property and figure out what we can actually do with it. How many trials, what is the mileage, what do the trails look like? And each step, Mayor informs the next step. Until we have this study, we don't know what kind of trails it will be, and therefore, we can't anticipate what the cost might be.
I've had several people interested, citizens, contact me, interested in this as well. And I think it's a good plan, and I appreciate all the staff that has been involved in trying to help this, move this along. So, I'm, I hope that we can move it along tonight.
Okay, Council, what's your pleasure?
I move that we go ahead and give the money to the mountain bike trail for the feasibility study of ten thousand dollars.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Patterson, and you want to authorize the staff to move ahead?
Yes, can I authorize the staff to move ahead?
To authorize the staff to move ahead with the study for the mountain bike trail and authorize ten thousand dollars to be taken from the council's contingency for that purpose.
Mayor, can you add that staff has, staff and council have the ability to negotiate and reach an agreement to present to council for signature?
Okay, we'd better state the motion again, please.
And if I may, do we need to add that the total study won't exceed twenty thousand dollars?
Twenty thousand dollars, yeah.
Happen half-bites.
Want to start over again?
I might need y'all to chime in pace by pace, but.
Well, why don't you have Ms. Kingsley read back what she's got?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Ms. Patterson made a motion to award the money to the Mountain Bike Trail for the feasibility study in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and staff move the head from the council and take the money from the council contingents.
Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Total.
Total. Or ten thousand dollars? Or you have, we're getting the ten thousand dollar donation. Is that what you're, is that what you're thinking, Mr. Craig?
Did you say the study is not to exceed twenty thousand with town underwriting ten and donor, town underwriting up to ten and donor underwriting up to ten?
Yeah, because I believe the donor was matching that.
Yes.
Yeah, because that way, we're not obligated for the other ten thousand, I guess.
You want to authorize?
Does that sound?
Hang on, let's get something.
Of course, it's complicated if I have anything to do with it, so.
No, this is just complicated.
We gotta, we gotta make sure it's right.
Okay, we need to authorize the staff to proceed.
With feasibility study?
With the Phase One, you said, what you're calling it, Jane, a feasibility study? You call it Phase One?
You say Phase One feasibility study, if you want to.
With Phase One feasibility study.
Okay. Not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Hang on, let me, let me get with Campbell in there first, and then, I'll read it to you.
All right.
Phase One feasibility study.
To allow staff and council?
And to allow the staff to negotiate a contract. A contract with somebody or just a contract? Contract with what, who?
We would contract with.
A private citizen or?
International Mountain Bike Association slash Trail Solutions.
International Bike Association slash Trails Solution.
A contract not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
With the town underwriting up to ten and anonymous donor underwriting up to ten.
We've got to see where it's going to run. And not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
With the town underwriting up to?
With the town.
Underwriting up to twenty, up to ten thousand, excuse me.
Ten thousand dollars to be taken from the council contingency. Okay. I like saying, I will read this to you.
Okay.
Okay, your motion is to authorize the staff to proceed with Phase, with a Phase One feasibility study? And for the staff?
Authorize the staff to negotiate a contract.
And to authorize the staff to negotiate a contract with International Bike Association, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, with the town underwriting up to ten thousand dollars to be taken from the council's contingency.
Yes.
Do you have any problem with that motion?
What about the private, the donor?
I don't know if that needs to involve the town director, but you can have that.
I just want to make sure that we understand the whole contract with.
Right. It needs to be in the record too, so we need to, I guess it should be in the motion.
And ten thousand dollars from an anonymous donor?
Yes. And to accept ten thousand dollars from an anonymous donor?
And to accept ten thousand dollars from an anonymous donor.
I don't know if accept is the right verb there. I don't know if we're going to be passing money for.
Why do we have to say anything about where the other ten's got to come from?
Well, I think it's important to mention that, but I don't think that we should be accepting the money. I wouldn't say that that person is going to pay the bike.
Okay.
Okay, what do we say, to be taken from the town contingency and ten thousand from private donations? Is that our?
To be paid to the Mountain Bike Association.
I think in private donations.
Okay, private donation. Okay, I agree with that.
Okay.
That's my motion.
And here's a.
Should I read it?
You could have chiseled that into stone tablet by then.
Anybody got a hammer and a piece of rock out there?
Okay, pass that down. Okay, we've got it.
And I'm going to second that while it's hot, so.
Okay.
Second while it's hot.
Thank you very much. Sorry for all worrying, but thank you very much.
I just wanted to get it right.
Is any discussion, Council?
Well, good luck with that.
Let me get the stuff. Any discussion? Okay, Kim Colerole, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Now, I've lost my agenda.
Oh, gosh. Thank y'all for coming. Who's leaving?
The next item is a consideration of awarding EPR contact to complete 2018 Comprehensive Plan, Jason Boswell. Were you popular tonight?
Yeah, three times. Three, three times in one night, that's a record, I think. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Craig and Honorable Counsel, again. The Planning Commission requested Town Staff at the July twenty-third, two thousand eighteen meeting to send out a request for proposal for consulting services for a comprehensive plan update. The RFP was drafted and released on August seventh, two thousand eighteen. The RFP deadline for submittal was September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, and the town received seven proposals. Town Staff reviewed and scored the proposals based on criteria submitted in the RFP. Of those seven proposals, three firms were selected for interviews, which included McBride Dale Clarion of Cincinnati, Ohio, EPRPC of Charlottesville, Virginia, and Hill Studios of Roanoke, Virginia. Town Staff, along with three Planning Commission members, Scott Wilson, Kenny Schuman, and Councilman Al Bradley, comprised the selection committee. Committee interviewed all three firms on November sixth, two thousand eighteen, and scored the firms based on the proposals. I'm sorry, I lost my place. The committee interviewed all three firms on November sixth and scored the firms based on the proposal, presentations, and criteria contained within the RFP. The committee unanimously agreed that EPR of Charlottesville was the firm best suited to accomplish the town's comprehensive plan update based on their strength and breadth of the scope of services included in the proposals, demonstrated expertise and experience in developing comprehensive plans in Virginia, effectiveness of performance in previous related work, and capability of proposed personnel assigned to the work. The Planning Commission and Town Staff recommend that council award the contract to EPRPC because they can meet the town's proposed deadline in twelve to eighteen months and are within the town's budget requirements.
Council, any questions?
I'd like to say I participated in this process, and we felt like EPR was by far the better respondent. And we hope the council will go along with that recommendation.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Council, what's your pleasure?
Mayor Craig, I move that we accept the Planning Commission's proposal for this consideration of awarding EPR company to the contract to complete the 2018 Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Patterson and seconded by Mr. Bradley. Can you address that, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Council, any discussion? No discussion. Kim Colerole, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
and Mayor Craig.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is update regarding members selected to serve on the town code, ordinance committee to review current code and suggest updates. Mr. Vittles.
Mayor Craig, the staff would recommend that committee be formed with Matt Bundy, Jimmy Stewart, Steven Jett, Jason Boswell, Tyler Vensel, and Tonya Trippleton.
Tonya.
All right, Council, what's your pleasure?
Do we need a motion?
I guess we do, yeah. I think we do.
I guess it would be to appoint a ad hoc committee for.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint the ad hoc committee as stated by Mr. Vittles just a moment ago.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Webb, seconded by Ms. Quetch. Any discussion?
What do we expect them to do?
Well, as I understand it, they're going to start with updating the zoning ordinance and then, move to the noise.
So, they're actually going to jump in and do the physical updates to the code?
That's what I understand.
So, the first?
Along with the help of our town attorney.
Good, okay.
So, the first is updating the zoning?
Is that correct, Kim? Okay.
Probably what we'll do is we'll do a general review of the ordinances. The ones that have been pointed out are the noise ordinance, taxi cab ordinance, the sign ordinance, which is part of zoning. There may need to be some outside assistance brought in for a full update of the zoning ordinance. That's a, that's a pretty complex task that requires some expertise. But the committee would probably be working with that consultant to get the update done and bring it before Planning Commission and Council for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, Kim Colerole, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
and Mayor Craig.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is an update from committee regarding summer laws. Mr. Vittles.
Committee met on November the sixteenth, and I want to thank Mr. Bradley for putting some of the thoughts down as to the possible uses of, or. possible uses of, uh, or outcomes for the property. I'll review the, uh, the five possibilities for disposition of the property that were discussed. Number one, the town retain ownership of the property and structure and put it to use as a museum or other public facility. Two, the town sell the property and struc- and structure at public auction, uh, which would generate the most immediate, uh, income for the town. Number three, uh, the town return the property and structure to the family. There exists the possibility of recouping some or all of the town's investment in the structure in that transit, transaction. Four, the town might establish a foundation and transfer ownership as well as operation and maintenance of the Summers Law Office and other historic buildings owned by the town. This might enable the foundation to seek grant funding from private sources that are not, uh, necessarily available under public ownership. And finally, the town, uh, might establish a, its own entity to govern the use, operation, and maintenance of historic properties, including the Law Office, Retirement, Fields Penn, and the Meadows House, among others. This would, uh, either replace or supplement several existing committees and would develop a priority list of needed improvements and look at ultimate uses of each of the properties.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Would you repeat number five again? The own entity of the-
Uh, I believe the discussion there, and jumping Mr. Bradley if I'm not, uh, was to create maybe an oversight committee as opposed to the current, where there's committees that look at each of the, uh, buildings, but no one's taking a look at the whole picture. Uh, so the, would, uh, to establish a, uh, internal entity or committee, uh, to govern the use, operation, and maintenance of historic properties, including the Summers Law Office, Retirement, Fields Penn, the Meadows House, and any others that, uh, council saw fit. This could replace several existing committees, uh, or supplement those committees and, uh, would be charged with developing a priority list of needed improvements, uh, as well as looking at the ultimate end use of each of the properties.
My personal preference is for item number five. I think the town ought to step up to the plate and treat its own historic properties the way it, way it requires private owners to treat historic properties in town.
Is that your motion or are you just, your comment?
That's a, a comment that I've put in my memorandum.
I didn't hear you. Did you put that in the form of a motion?
No, sir. That was just a comment. Um, I hope we'll get others.
Well, I'll have a comment, but does anybody else have one before I get started?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I wanna say that this has been one of the most difficult, um, processes that I've had to deal with since I've been on council. Because my heart is, is, is really, um, for and into historic per- properties. Keeping historic properties that we have is, is, has been very difficult. As y'all, as, as the public knows, um, it's been hard to, to fund the Fields Penn Museum, but I'm glad that Mr., um, Mike Pul- uh, Paulus came from the Department of Historic Resources in regards to the Fields Penn Museum, because I struggle with this because I know that we don't have a lot of money to, to fund these historic properties, and I don't wanna make a burden on the taxpayers by, you know, raising taxes to pay for historic properties. I don't really think that's fair. These properties have been let go and let down and for, over many, many years, and it's, is a, it's a travesty that they've been let down this many years. I will say that I, I have a bed and breakfast and, and I ask the bed and breakfast guests when they come sometimes, what's your favorite part of Abingdon? Why do you come to Abingdon? You know, could you give me some feedback? And they say that they love the historic properties. The beauty and the charm of this town derives from the historic properties and the history of Abingdon. And it's a charming quaint little town. The, you know, the other thing is I don't wanna get in a real hurry over, um, the decision of the Summers, um, Law Office. I know we've, we've, we've talked about it. We've, it's gone from several council, um, meetings, and, um, I just think that there was several citizens here this evening that I have to agree with as, as well as my council member, uh, Mr. Al Bradley, that we need an assessment for these historic properties and do a careful study of all historic properties. Um, in regards to the one that was done in twenty thirteen, Mr. Boswell brought up, um, while he was talking about the Fields Penn Museum, um, I think we could also take a look at that one again. I think I do have a copy of it, but, but that being said, um, I'm very hard, I, I was very, very, and I wanted to tell Mr. Paulus himself, but maybe he'll listen to this. My spirit was uplifted when he said that there are CLG grants available for these properties and that there's been no time in, in the history of us being with the CLG that money's been applied for, for grant money. That's, um, that's a real eye-opener, but my heart just sang when I knew that there was money in there for these historic properties that we can get and we don't have to pay for it. That being said, I'm gonna have to say that I'm, I'm not in favor of selling the Summers Law Office with, with that wonderful presentation with Mr. Paulus and, and the confidence that he has with the town of Abingdon and our beauty. I just can't, I cannot fathom to sell that, that law office at this time.
My thoughts are that, um, we should, uh, auction the property and the reasons are pretty simple. First off, the town has a horrible record of maintaining historic properties that we own. None of them, uh, I don't even say any of them, but there are at least three that we have no plan for, and they're in pretty bad condition. So the issue with me is not destroying the, the historic character of the building by, by disposing of it, because it will remain in the historic district and there can be deeds put into the covenant, uh, to, uh, covenants put into the deed. To protect the property. And I think it's much better that it be in private hands. I don't think it's an issue of destroying the character or diminishing the character of the town of Abingdon. We, we put it to a useful purpose. Uh, it goes on our tax rolls, makes all the sense in the world, and helps us, uh, uh, repair the, the properties that we already are neglecting. So I'm in favor of, uh, of auctioning the property.
Yeah, as, as I've said before, I figure I probably need to give an opinion for what it's worth. It's, uh, certainly, um, I feel, I feel for the family in, in that they have an attachment to the property, and I certainly don't want to, um, discourage them in any way. Having said that, I sorta have to agree with Wayne on this one. I, I think we've bitten off more than we can chew in regards to historic property maintenance. We've got two or three properties that are gonna require hundreds of thousands of dollars, and, and it is wonderful that there are some grant monies out there for us to take advantage of. But I, I think it all comes down for me is, are we gonna have to, it, and I hate to say this out loud, but Cindy already said it, you know, are we gonna come to a juncture where we have to raise taxes to pay for historic properties? And that to me is, is a, where the decision becomes incredibly difficult. Certainly, they give Abingdon the charm, um, that I was, you know, privy to growing up, and I don't wanna destroy that in any way. Having said that, it, the property is in the historic overlay. Um, whoever, if someone were to purchase it, um, they would have to maintain it. Or they'd have to answer to the Historic Preservation Review Board, which I'm also a member of. And, um, but I, I just wanna put that on the record that this is an incredibly difficult decision. It is very easy to get emotional, emotionally attached to something. And, and my personal experiences, when you get emotionally attached to something, you think irrationally for what it's worth.
Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure on this matter?
I just think at some point we have to move forward. And I agree that, you know, we talk about these historical properties, but we really don't have the money, um, available to put in and fix up all these historical properties. So at some point, they become, you know, it becomes a burden on the taxpayers. You know, I look at it as it belongs to the citizens and we have to decide this, uh, like we would for the citizens, you know? It's not about us. Uh, it's about the citizens, so I'm not I, like I said, I just think we have to move forward on this because, you know, it's costing us now just to keep it the way it is.
I would like to say one more thing, Mayor Craig. If you don't, are you done, Donna? I didn't butt in, did I?
No.
Okay. Um, the one last thing that I would like to add is I thought about the same things as you, you all thought about. But the number five option, uh, it wouldn't be my position to say this, but we could, um, rent it for fair market value. It, it's actually been rented for very low dollar amount, and we, I don't think that's, you know, that's good. But if we did a fair market value, it could be rented and it wouldn't cost the taxpayers anything. And we would make a profit, and you can't get the amount of money that you're gonna make. You're not gonna get interest from the amount of money that we might get from a public auction as far as rental each month. So we could put the rental money on the historic properties that we get each month.
The problem with, uh, rental property is that the town is not equipped staff-wise to manage real estate. And, uh, also, there would be a lease with a termination date, and we'd have procurement requirements that we'd have to advertise the lease and all of that hush and jawn. And, uh, I, I, I just think it's best that we go ahead and dispose of the property, put it in private hands, and the people that are interested in it, uh, and indicated they wanna bid on it are certainly all of them in my mind, are, would, uh, would take wonderful care of the building. Uh, I, I think that, that's the way we need to move. And, uh, Donna, I agree with you. We need to move forward and decide on this, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the, uh, town manager to, uh, place the property up for auction and authorize the town attorney to prepare a deed with appropriate covenants, uh, for the historic preservation of the building in the historic district.
I'm gonna go ahead and second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Any discussion?
Is there any further discussion?
I just would like to say one more thing with all due respect. We do rent the Barter Theater for a nominal fee, so we are renting one piece of property that I know of, and that's out of all due respect.
Okay, Kim Carroll, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Nay.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Nay.
Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion regarding alternative election of mayor and council at November general election in cities of town. Al Bradley.
I've left a, left for all of you a copy of this document taken from the code of Virginia. Mr. Macbeth at the November meeting pointed this out to us that we had a option to change the process of election with the town council to conform to the ordn- the normal time for elections in the state of Virginia rather than in May, when town elections are customarily held for some strange reason. And, uh, I don't suggest that we do anything about it now except for maybe to ask Mr. Bell to clarify this for us and let us know what he thinks.
Al, when do you, uh, you haven't heard a move on this?
No, no, I just, I just wanted to- Get it in front of the town council, um, officially and, and try to get Mr. Bell to clarify what, what this language in the state code says.
Okay, counsel, is that okay? We asked Cam to look into this for us.
I think it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It says, as I read it on this reading quickly, that it appears that you can't take any action, um, between January one and the May general election date within a year or so.
Okay.
By statute, you've got some time to consider it.
But you'll look into it, Paul.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Look at my agenda. Way I lost my agenda. Let me borrow yours. Appointments to boards and committees. Counsel, the hour is late. There are three items on there. Sustain Abingdon, uh, tree commission is a reappointment, Seaking Springs Cemetery is a reappointment. Would you all, uh, I don't particularly want to go in closed session and discuss the sustained Abingdon appointments unless you all do. Could we? Is it all right for everybody to put that off until the next page? I, I, I'm sorry, Cindy, I'll come back.
All right. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's okay.
The, uh, we have, uh, tree commission, reappointment of Chris Sullivan, who is eligible to serve his final term. What's your pleasure?
I, I move, um, or I'd like to make a motion, Mayor Craig, that to reappoint Chris Sullivan, who is eligible to serve a final term on the tree commission.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, motion by Ms. Patterson, uh, to reappoint Chris Sullivan, and seconded by Mr. Webb, Vice Mayor Patterson. Any discussion? Kim Carroll, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Aye.
Uh, the Seaking Springs Cemetery reappointment of Martha Keys. What's your pleasure?
I'm moving to reappoint Ms. Keys.
Motion by Mr. Bradley.
I second that.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Patterson. Any discussion? Carroll, please, Kim.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Craig.
Okay. Uh, uh, the, I skipped over council member reports, and Vice Mayor Patterson kept me straight, so who wants to make a report?
I can tell you that I have been to the comprehensive plan meetings, several of those, Metro Urban Planning, Veterans Park Committee, uh, ho- hosted the, uh, November eleventh Veterans Master Ceremony thing, and been to planning commission meeting and Summers Law Office Committee meeting. I've been to a lot of meetings.
Same beliefs.
Well, you have been a busy man.
I try.
Donna, do you have anything to report to us?
Well, I went to that, uh, this morning at the IRS and, and, uh, the legislators.
Well, you were in the Christmas parade.
And I went to the tree lighting. That was, but I'm enjoying this. I, uh, retired last week, so I'll be, I'll be available more to be more- I retired last week, so I'll be, I'll be available more to be more involved, hopefully, so.
All right. Cindy?
I, I've been to several meetings as well, and to my dutiful meetings, and let's see, I, I know that I went to several of the meetings for the, just, let's just say, I went to a lot of meetings.
You've been to a lot of meetings.
A lot of meetings, and, and we've had a ceremony for the Veterans Park, which we dedicated the sign for God and Country to the park, and I got to hear one of the chaplains explain what their job is for the military, and that was very touching and moving and interesting to listen to, how he helps the military service members, and it was, also we, we recognized Max Harmon as being a founding member of the Veterans Memorial Park as well. That was very, that was, it was just great, a great ceremony, so, and I've enjoyed the Christmas parade, the tree lighting, making elf hats, and all the above. I'm very, I'm very, very happy to be serving on this council. I enjoy what I do.
We're glad to have you here. But you better watch too many of those meetings, someone will get you drunk. There, you go.
Yeah, just to be brief, I had a plethora of meetings as well, notably the very positive and informative Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, Special College Council meeting, where we discussed the progress of the sports complex and kind of where we are with planning. I think we're about ninety-five percent complete with planning, and as soon as they finish the grading, we're going to move forward with that. Also got to be in the Christmas parade and make elf hats, and yeah, there's a really awesome photo of Cindy and I on the town of Abingdon, which, and I'm pretty sure we got some, some license hits on that one. I won't say it's viral yet, but it was a pretty good one. And Wayne, just for the record, Wayne loved my suit in the Christmas parade. He loved it. I'm going to let him borrow it for the next Christmas parade. Yeah, yeah, breakfast on Wednesday, you can borrow it for them, yeah.
Oh, that's right. What other things that we have coming up that, well, we got the breakfast and...
We have a, a...
Yeah, council retreat.
Yeah, council retreat.
Council retreat coming out the twelfth, and we look forward to working with that to get all of us together, and also, December the ninth, at three o'clock, Dwayne Knight will be installed as pastor at the Valley Street Baptist Church, and I would encourage you all to attend that as well. And then I want to wish everybody, and I hope, I want everybody to do this, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I want to wish everybody in this whole town, whole county, a very wonderful, happy, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I hope that 2019 brings you all much love, joy, and peace.
Okay, on that note, I'm going to adjourn the meeting unless there's something, something else that's... Okay, meetings adjourned.
Thank you.